Only 600-page agenda. It's four o'clock. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the adoption of the Brownfield Plan for Eddie redevelopment. So just so you know, at this time, I'm going to ask three different times if anyone is here to speak on behalf of that. So first time I say it is, is there anyone here who would like to speak on the adoption of the Brownfield Plan for Eddie redevelopment? Is there anyone here who would like to speak on the adoption of the Brownfield Plan for Eddie redevelopment?
I do.
You do? Okay, well, it's your, you're up.
Commissioners, thank you. So a couple of older schools and some 20 acres of land, a seemingly already said deal in the works. That deal had failed. Now the land bank comes in to save the day. A January 20th, 2021 school board meeting with the land bank present had a plan in place. We'll buy the school and the properties for much less than market value. My words, not theirs. We should be able to ink a deal with the developer to be done with. The school board minutes were not even written when the development company filed their LLC just six days later. Local paper praised all involved, seemed everything was in motion. The purchase of $150,000 for two schools and 20 acres of land in St. Clair. Move-in time came, clean out of the stuff the school district left behind. A couple of local businesses and a sprinkle of nonprofits moved in. Numerous county employees, elected officials, and corporate counsel, all in on the action. Excuse me, a developer with a rather amazing real estate deal, tenants with a pretty good gig as well. With all of this said, how has any of this benefited the taxpayers up until now? We now hear that a Brownfield pitch is in order to give the developer even more tax incentives, reimbursements, and a good bound of liability protection right back to himself. Was all of this done for the taxpayers? How long will it be until we see the benefits of this deal? Please consider all of this prior to the vote on the Eddie Brownfield. Who has this benefited? In closing, where have all the rent checks gone since the tenants moved in? Thank you.
So on the public hearing, is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the adoption of the Brownfield Plan for Eddie redevelopment? Hearing none, just closed the public hearing at 4:02. Have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion hearing, public, motion carried, public hearing is closed. And now we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand and join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm. Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Here.
We have a quorum, are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
I would make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carries, item four, approval of the agenda.
That was it? That was it.
Additions, changes, approval, got it. Sorry, minutes of the previous meeting.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve and file the minutes of May 19th, 2022 commission meeting and the June 2nd, 2022 standing committee meetings.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, we have no proclamations, the consent agenda, item seven.
This chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve items seven A through seven C on the consent agenda.
Support.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries, item eight, reports of standing and special committees, Commissioner Van Bosch?
Nothing.
Yes, a little bit. Today at 11:30, the Michigan Township Association, which you were a part of at one time, I was president of it for five of my six years supervisor. They met at Riley Township Golf Course, or Bell River Golf Course in Riley Township. Twenty-two members were present. Who was there, Bill Dieter, just got appointed as president for MTA throughout the entire state of Michigan, all 1,200-plus townships. In addition, Bob Lewandowski was there, our new director for St. Clair County. They conducted their quarterly business and it was a fairly good meeting. We had numerous township officials ask specific questions on how they could help. And some of them were just elected to office so that, you know, when you first get in, you don't know a whole lot about the runnings of government. So they asked some specific questions and everybody said, give us a call because township has always been very helpful to help each other. So it was a very good meeting, it lasted about, well, almost two hours.
Very good.
And if you, remember, you asked me, I did ask like all if you wanted to be present at our last meeting when it was going to be held and very good meeting.
Very, very good, thank you. Commissioner Dunn.
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Beeden.
The Commission on Aging is working through St. Clair County's Facebook page to promote items that they, or programs that the Commission on Aging supports. There is a senior millage on the ballot in August. So if you have any questions, you can ask me or reach out to Jenny Posey. But there is a lot of information on the, on Facebook about what the Commission on Aging supports and where those millage dollars go.
I, I was, I listened into the Zoom meeting, is, was it chip?
Yes.
Is that? Interesting, there's a lot of stuff going on, that's a, there's an aggressive, a lot of aggressive issues on there. It was, it was good to listen to and it's available online, I think, for anybody to hear it.
Yeah, so it's the Community Health Plan and it's available on the, the Health Department's website. It's quite extensive, this is the second time we've done the chip. Yes. And so it's, it's good to see how far we've come and to know how much further we need to go.
Right.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Item nine, citizens wishing to address the board, we have Don Wiki.
So I'd like to go back over the last couple of months when we had this room full of people that were upset about Dr. Mercantant and the policies and mandates that she was trying to push down on us. That at one point she was arguing with one of the residents that the vaccine was FDA-approved and everyone needed to have it and the resident said, no, the FDA-approved one is not available. And anyone with a phone could have called Pfizer and found out it's not manufactured and they have no intention of manufacturing it. My point being with that is the months that we went through with that, and it's my understanding that there has been a recommendation for someone to fill her position. And I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it's someone from the Health Department. And the recommendation was made that this person would be a good fit because they understood the ins and outs of the Health Department. I guess the point of the whole last, I don't know, year more that we were here and upset is we don't like the policy. We don't like the way that the current Health Department is run. We would like to see someone new brought in, the system needs to be gone through and the network needs to be done to have business as usual. And the same, the same old, same old is not working and you'll just have more upset people here. Let's bring in someone new with fresh ideas to be able to review the current system and make changes for what needs to happen. At this point, what was done by this community from the current Health Department, they tore this community apart. No one trusted anymore, or I shouldn't say no one, over half the community no longer trusts the Health Department. And they are not an integral part of this community any longer. So we need to rebuild that and doing the same old, same old is not going to make that happen. The other thing that I'd like to be considered is for each of you that were elected, you all have, have to be bonded and you have to take an oath of office. For anyone that is appointed from this point forward, we would love to see that they also be bonded and have to take an oath of office. That would allow the people of the community to hold that person accountable for their decisions when this board will not.
Your time's up.
All right, thank you.
Bill McMurtry? Bill McMurtry?
He's, he's on. Okay, I am Rockaway Township Supervisor Bill McMurtry. I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for this opportunity to address this forum in hope of cooperation on your part to request an investigation of the St. Clair County Drain Commission for, among other things, improper and what would seem unlawful practices related to drain issues. The Drain Commissioner has little or no accountability. The Commissioners are responsible to the residents of St. Clair County and need to be involved. Back in March 24, 2021, the state of Michigan passed an accountability, excuse me, passed a pre-qualified contractor law that all contractors have to be on file with the Drain Commission for work. And I give Commissioner McConnell a pamphlet of a bunch of different qualified contractors, they're all in there, that don't meet the requirements by the Michigan law and they're being used. Now, we have a problem up there with the Middleton Drain in St., in Rockaway Township. And what, how it works on a maintenance plan, the drain code says you're allowed $5,000 a mile per year for maintenance of a drain. All right. The drain up there in Rockaway Township is four miles long. So in 2020, they'd done a half a mile and charged around $17,000. And then in 2021, they came back and finished the other half of the mile for $21,198.66. And that's an overcharge because what they, what they're allowed to do is they take the drain and times it by the length. They can, and they can do whatever little bit they want to do and quit whenever they feel like it. And then it can charge 5,000 a mile per year times the length of the drain. It's a four-mile drain, 20 grand, jeepers, if it was a 20-mile drain, how much would it be? So this is not right. They've obviously, they went, they went over on the 2021 on the Middleton Drain. And if you've got to do that, if you go over your expenditure allowance by the state, you're supposed to come to the township for a resolution. Didn't do it. So they're over on that and we got about $38,000 into a mile of drain right now over two years. There's your 5,000 a mile. Now Senator Daley out of, where is it, can't forget with Township, Arcadia Township, I've contacted his office, he wants to raise it from 5,000 a mile to 10,000 a mile. I don't know if 5,000's enough, I don't know if 10,000's enough, but these aren't bid, they're not bid out. They're just willy-nilly handed and they drive a stake or whatever they do and decide this is as far as we're going to go this year and we're going to charge you the max. You want to talk about something that's screwy. And then in 2018, the excavator under one of the contractors, they were charged according to MDOT rates about $51 an hour for the excavator. Then in 2018 and 19.
If, if you'd wrap it up.
Yeah, yeah, they charged it to, they changed it to 105.99 an hour and the MDOT rates are only $67. We asked to get on the agenda for this, does that mean three minutes is still all we get? Yes or no?
Well, during the, during the public, you, you put in a sheet for public comment, I know that you're on the agenda, I didn't know.
I called Mr. Boyer and asked to be on the agenda and he said we wouldn't have to be. So now am I cut off or what? Because I've got a little bit more to go here.
It is on the agenda, yeah.
You're on the agenda.
You're on the agenda.
You filled out a form asking to talk in citizens' comment instead of.
So you're telling me I'm done?
Bill, Bill, there'll be, there'll be more time, it'll be further addressed on the agenda item as well.
Pardon?
Jay, that's Jay talking to you. It'll be further addressed on the agenda item too, so you'll have more opportunity to get in deeper.
Okay, because I put on my card drain issues and she said before the meeting started that we would be under the R, it said drain issue.
Just for, just kind of a funny, back when I was Township Supervisor, I addressed the county commissioners in regards to road issues. And I was on the agenda, but Angle, was that, was that her name?
Anger.
Anger. She made me fill out a card. And then of course I spoke my three minutes, then when it came up, I got back up and talked again because I was on the agenda. And I said, well, if you need me to talk, fill this out, I'll fill it out, but then I talked twice.
Yeah.
So you are on the, or the drain issues are on the agenda.
So do I come back or finish?
That's up to the chair.
Well, he's not the only one to speak during the, are, are you speaking also? So it probably makes more sense to handle it all under the agenda item, I would think. But if you fill out a card, I have to call your name because you filled out for citizens wishing to address the board. But this entire topic is being handled under new business, under R, so.
So what do I do, do I finish or do I quit?
You'll, you'll come back.
You can come back.
Under R.
Under R.
Yes.
Okay.
Burwell Tatteras?
I'm with Bill, I'll wait.
Okay.
Taurus.
Taurus, I apologize. Pam Binsfeld?
Good afternoon, it's usually evening, so I had to switch that up. I have been unable to attend a meeting in a little while, so I actually had intended on sharing this information last month. But now is as good a time as any. And I also know that Dr. Mercantant contract is up in a couple of weeks. But through FOIA, I have obtained some emails that I found were pertinent to share. My focus for the FOIA was on the conversations that were taking place between Dr. Mercantant and my district, Marysville Public Schools Superintendent Sean Whiteman from January 2020 to May 2022. In these emails, the superintendent is found to be passing along medical mask exemptions from a local pediatrician for a student and asking that Dr. Mercantant speak to said physician as this is ridiculous. Dr. Mercantant responds that the superintendent should deny all exemptions and that she will speak to the physician. They also exchanged information about parents' names and activities on private social media accounts. Dr. Mercantant has, sorry, has been sent parents' emails that were originally sent to teachers, administration, or board members by our superintendent. Her common responses were to call us ignorant, threats, or warn against us being smart enough to be dangerous. Names of students in which schools they attend were also being exchanged whenever a parent spoke out or asked any questions. She also dictated to Dr. Whiteman what was to be said in said letters that were sent home regarding any COVID information. Through these emails, it was made very clear that my district and the Health Department were working closely to continue the COVID narrative and were collecting data and information on the parents. The light at the end of this tunnel is a welcome one and it was encouraging to see that there were several applicants for the position of public health officer and medical director, especially as it was cautioned that these positions would be extremely hard to fill. My concern is that the pattern of attempting to remove our rights and impose medical tyranny upon us will continue with the new hires. This possibility was one I had hoped the board would have been better about vetting the applicants on. On paper, these applicants may be the best qualified for the position, but what have their actions stated? I am hoping that we have learned from this last year, two years, three years, I feel like an eternity now. And instead of allowing history to repeat itself, we correct our actions, thank you.
Vicki Blackburn?
Good afternoon, I respectfully address the Board of Commissioners this afternoon. And I thought that this would be a moot point, but evidently it's not. Evidently, there are still some people that wish to make the public health of our county a political issue. When I heard the name of the present person in that position being disparaged, I take on bridge of that. If somebody wants to come up here and talk about specifics regarding the Health Department in terms of services that are offered to teens, services that are offered in the public health realm specifically, I find that appropriate. To come up here and talk and make it a political issue, I think is highly inappropriate. And I know that it's very hard to find people for these jobs and I think that we need to leave it in the hands of the experts for the vetting process. And again, if you have issues about specifics regarding the Health Department, please pass it on to the people there doing the vetting and let's keep politics out of this. And thank you for your patience with me through this process. And I, I look forward to communication with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean, did you, you didn't have to do a sheet for the public hearing, was this though for that, so you're good, okay, just wanted to make sure. Welcome. Okay, we have no unfinished business? Moving on to new business, 11, item A, rule of county disbursements for May 2022.
This time I move to approve the May 2022 county disbursements in the amount of $18,806,972.51.
Support.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Oh, sorry. Roll call. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Yes.
Chair Baldwin.
Yes. Motion carries, item B, contract approval request for Blue Water Safe Horizons 2022 contract addendum number one.
I would make a motion to approve addendum one to the professional services contract with Blue Water Safe Horizons to include case management services and increase the total amount of the agreement to, an amount not to exceed $51,779.
Support.
Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes. Item C, fiscal year 2023 County Veteran Service Fund Grant Application.
Madam Chair, I, excuse me, I'd move to approve the 2023 Veteran, County Veteran Service Fund Grant Application in the amount of $93,831.
Support.
Thank you, and just on the application, right? Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. Item D, the Resolution 2217 approving the AAA 1B fiscal year 23 to 25 multi-year plan.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2117 approving the agency, area agency on aging 1B fiscal year 2023 to 2025 multi-year plan.
Support.
Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes. Item E, the agreement between Department of Health and Human Services and Public Guardian.
I would make a motion to approve the agreement between the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and the Public Guardian and associated amendments for guardianship services for a term of 10-119 through 9-3023 in the total amount of $61,586.
Support.
Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Item F, control, or I'm sorry, contract approval request for Connect Health and Core XRM.
This chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the software module development and implementation of inmate invoice billing module with Connect Health Core XRM in the amount of $37,750 with an annual maintenance fee of $4,762.50.
Mrs. Van den Bosch, I'd make a motion, or I would second that motion.
I have a motion and a support, any questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes. Item G, Sheriff's Office Fiscal Year 2022 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program Application.
This time I move to approve the fiscal year 2022 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program Grant Application for the Sheriff's Office in the amount of $5,250.
Support.
Thank you, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. Motion carries. Item H, the landfill cell eight valley fill contract amendment.
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve addendum A of the agreement with Talaski Excavating LLC, increasing compensation by one hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents to conduct valley trash fill in cell eight operating area at the landfill.
Support.
Any questions or comments? We have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembaas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes. Motion carries. Item I, landfill roll-off container procurement.
I would make a motion to approve procurement of roll-off containers for the landfill from Refuge Equipment Services of St. Clair in the amount of forty-one thousand, four dollars.
Support. Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Item J, the landfill septic valve station project.
And if I could, Chair, Jeff Bohm normally does this. For everybody that's present, a lot of these things, we do the committee meeting. Of course, this meeting's being held at four, the committee meeting was held at six, two weeks ago, and we've already discussed these pretty much at length. There may be more discussion tonight, but that's why we're moving pretty fast, is because these have already been discussed under committee, so a lot of the questions have already been asked prior to this. Tonight's the business meeting to get these things approved.
There's an issue with the audio.
With the audio?
Yeah.
Still can't hear back there?
Well, you can try to hear, but it's on the voice back. Okay. I was trying to make you know that we can't hear the last.
Is the, Paul, is it, is the air, or is there something running up that too? Okay. Okay. Trying to fix it? Okay. Has it been the whole meeting? Or did it just, not that, just, okay. Yep. Okay. We'll try to talk directly into the mics and see if that.
Was that a motion, Dave?
Yeah, as soon as the chair lets me. At this time, okay, I'll go ahead with the motion. This time, I move to approve agreement with Raymond Excavating Company for the septic force main valve station in the landfill in the amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and five cents.
Support.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Madam Chair, I'd be abstaining. I'm employed by Raymond Excavating.
Okay.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembaas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Item K, the resolution 22-16 Eddy Development Brownfield Plan.
Madam Chair, I'd move to adopt resolution 22-16 approving a brownfield plan for the redevelopment project of the Eddy and Gearing Elementary School buildings.
Do we have a support?
Support.
Any questions or comments?
Ah, yes, I do. Sean brought up some very good points. When we get a lot of these brownfields, we don't get, a lot of these projects come forward, and they're the only ones that come forward to get these applications. I didn't know if this has been offered before, how long it's been on sale, so one hundred and fifty thousand for 20 acres is pretty darn cheap right now. So that is a concern, also on the option and the taxes. If this would have gone back to normal sales, would it have gone for sale? Do we have somebody that tells us, how long has this been on the market?
Jeff, are you aware of the?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure how long it's on market now. The purchase price was negotiated between the developer and the school district.
And I'm sorry, Jeff, you know I'm hard of hearing. If you would, please.
The question was how long it was on market for. I'm sorry, I apologize, I don't have the answer for that, but I do know that the purchase price was something that was negotiated between the developer and the school district. I'm not sure the terms under which that was done, because again, that was between the developer and the school district.
You're going to do your job and what you need to do to go forward, and you're asking specific questions, that and what you did. It does seem to be a concern that we're going to be give a tax payments, and it's never been offered to the public. Is that true? Or do you know?
Well, actually, it, tax abatements, I think, is not the term to apply here. What we're talking about, so we're talking about this parcel, which includes Eddy and Gearing and all the vacant land in between. None of that land's been on the tax rolls for decades because it's school-owned. So you have a private developer that's come negotiate a purchase of it, and there was other developers that were also in discussions with the district at the time as well. There was one that wanted it for parking. There was some nonprofits that were looking at the use of the site, which would not have generated any tax revenue for the local community as well, et cetera. So they arrived, and that's, this is what I understand, and has been told to me, we were not, we being the counties, and I'm speaking on behalf of the county's brownfield redevelopment authority and the county's land bank authority, which I was staffed for, we were not party to those discussions and that, and those negotiations, but.
I'm just learning more myself, so.
Sure.
Is the school board, that they're currently, they're the ones that made the decision and negotiation to sell this for one hundred and fifty thousand?
The school district signed off on it. I'm not sure of the process and how that worked.
I believe they own the property, correct?
Yes. Yeah, East China School District.
So they have the authority to make these types of agreements for the brownfield?
Correct.
Okay. And with the developer, one hundred and fifty thousand. Well, of course, we do the brownfield, or you know, the school district wouldn't do that, but.
So Jeff, at what point, so just for everyone's education.
Sure.
Here. So this, this, it was a deal between someone on a school district level, whether that be the superintendent or the board, and a private developer. How does it get to us? Which part do we play? Because we're not, we're not a part of those discussions. We didn't own the land. We don't navigate, we don't negotiate any of those things, but then how, why is it here?
Well, so there's two entities that are, I would say, falling under the county's purvey that got involved in the deal, the land bank authority and the county's brownfield redevelopment authority. The county land bank authority was brought into the deal because it would have taken some time to do some environmental assessments on the property and, and determine what needed to be done from an environmental contamination standpoint. And there was also, if the vacant land was to be developed, there would anticipate to be great costs associated with that, such costs that it would mitigate the ability to do developments like single-family homes, et cetera, which was originally in discussion on the site. As the city went forward, working with the school district and the developer, they realized that single-family homes and development on the vacant land was probably not what they felt the highest and best use, so that the developer that was redeveloping Eddy and Gearing partnered with another developer that works on a national basis to bring in senior housing on the vacant land, because it would generate a much greater tax base for the local community. So tax abatement is not what's occurring here. There's a brownfield plan that was being, is before you this evening, that was developed to take care and, and identify and remediate asbestos concerns in the two schools, because there is some in there, and that's, and that question was brought up before because it was concerned, because at Gearing is still going on, but it was asbestos that is not in a, it's, it's currently encapsulated, it's not in a place that would affect anybody on an ongoing basis as the school is being used currently, but if they were to start swinging hammers in there and doing interior demolition, it would, it would bring that asbestos into place. It had to be identified prior to any redevelopment work going there, and then a plan is put into place to how to remediate that asbestos and the interior demolition that would occur with that. That is what the brownfield plan is looking at reimbursing to the developer, because that's what brownfield plans do. They reimburse costs identified by the brownfield statute as brownfield costs above and beyond if you just go to a green field somewhere and start building it new. So they have to deal with liabilities they didn't create. In other words, the developer's taking on a project, and it has asbestos there, they didn't put asbestos there. The cost of mediating that, in some cases, would make some projects not work out, the numbers wouldn't work out. So the brownfield program work comes in to take care of those costs, and the way it takes care of those costs is the developer invests in the site, creates a much higher taxable value for the site, and the new, and some of those taxes are captured because the developer pays us on an annual basis, and they always go into a bucket that goes to reimbursing some of those costs for a period of time until those costs are paid off. In this case, it's six years. During those six years, the local taxing jurisdictions will get approximately about a million dollars of tax revenues, and then immediately after the six years of tax capture, then the tax, then the tax revenue is going to all the taxing jurisdictions, jumps up to, I have, see, I can't remember the exact amount, I want to say somewhere in the neighborhood between seven hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars a year. And remember, there's zero dollars coming in on these properties currently. So I think I went beyond your question, but that's, there's a lot that goes into that, why the land bank and the brownfield authority were involved in this project.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Donaldson? Absolutely.
Sure.
What is the time essence for this to go forward?
So, Eddy.
Is it time sensitive to get this pushed forward?
Yeah. What is, why it's time sensitive now is because there's a land split that has been approved at the local level, splitting off a portion of the property to allow for this senior housing developer that's going, coming in to build the senior housing. They want to break ground July 1st. They have a closing set at the end of this month, so in order to meet the closing, the property is currently in the land banks, is, the land bank is, has ownership of it. The brownfield plan has to be approved, and then the new tax assessment will occur once the property transfers to a new land developer and it goes into private holding. So we want to make sure the brownfield plan was approved prior to that taxable event.
Well, I know George is very, if I can, George is very familiar with being a township supervisor, so am I. How'd you come up with the million dollars and the seven to eight hundred thousand dollars with the assessment if you're not going to get it assessed until this goes forward?
So we have to, that's, that's a problem we have to work on, on every brownfield project. To develop the plan, we have to, we have to work with local assessors that will take a look at the developers' plans, we look at the plans for the project, look at comparable projects, and we come up with what we believe, based on the assessor's input, would be a fair.
These are ballpark figures.
That's right, yes. These are exact numbers, so they could change here a little bit, but they're usually fairly, fairly accurate, because it's, it's in our best interest to be as accurate as possible.
I got two more questions.
Yes, please.
Do you know what the costs are? Because you said they'd be excessive, but you don't know specifically what the cost would be without using this to offset the costs, because with them going in there and developing this to help the developer offset their cost? That's about what you said earlier. Do you know what those costs are to, for this?
Yeah, the developer, yes. The developer is getting, actually, they, they submitted all the activities that they anticipated having to do with the redevelopment of Eddy and Gearing, and it came out to four hundred and ten thousand dollars and change. We actually capped it, their, their eligible activities at three hundred thousand dollars, and we did, the reason that was done is to ensure during the six years that the local communities and all the local taxing jurisdictions would get some of the taxes as well. They wouldn't all go towards reimbursing the developer, because quite often in these cases, especially where you talk about a property that has a zero taxable value when it goes into a brownfield plan, the local taxing jurisdictions don't get anything until the brownfield plan is, is fully paid out to, with all the eligible expenses. But in this case, we wanted to ensure that the local taxing jurisdictions had some immediate benefit from this project.
And I guess the obvious question, the school district, when they purchased the property, however many years ago, if, and I know with townships, if they purchase property through the county clerk or treasurer's office, when they get foreclosures, they're first in line if they want the property. Riley Township has done that, I'm sure Fort Grashit has. Once you get that property and you find out you don't need a use, when you sell that property, I believe the county gets the money back, or they're supposed to, or if it's M.D.
They get made a hole on their tax.
Right. And they're not allowed to make a huge profit on it. So if the school district, whatever that cost was, if it was ten thousand dollars fifty years ago, I'm just being lowballing this here, even if they were to get, you know, right now you're looking at, you know, pretty minimal, seven thousand, five hundred per acre. Let's say it went for three hundred thousand out in the open market, they still wouldn't get to have that money, would they?
I'm not clear on that. I, I am, I am somewhat familiar with what you're talking about, but I'm not clear on all the, all the rules, but that does sound familiar. Again, I wasn't privy to the negotiation with the school district and how they arrived at that purchase price. So I do know that many were relieved that they had, they remained in control with what's going to happen with that property, because there were other potential looming opportunities there, if you will, and the school district could have gone with any of the, any of those possibilities, but this possibility here, when it's all said and done, it'll realize anticipated private development investment of over twenty-five million dollars on the entire property, thirty-five full-time equivalent jobs, and a significant tax base going forward. For the first six years, it'll be, that tax base will be somewhat, some of it will go to reimbursing the eligible expenses as identified in the brownfield plan, but after year six and a half, seven, the full tax base, that full pop-up goes to all the taxing jurisdictions, and it's significant.
And whoever's been here, I can't think of a brownfield that's been questioned in front of us in the past, so I'm getting an education myself.
Sure. Well, and we, we worked with them in Fort Grashit, with, with brownfield, and in the same, you know, to your point, when we've gotten property from foreclosures, we, we didn't sell them at market value, we had to go through some kind of competitive process because the money, we can't capture the money. So if it can stay with a developer who can put it back into the land, because then within six months, we had three homes on the tax roll from previously tax-exempt land. So, so I know that there are things like that that happen, but in this case, the brownfield isn't even involved until there's two, two parties separate from anyone on a county level have agreed to sell it.
I just have one more question. You said this is approximately a twenty-five million dollar project.
That's, so about, when I say twenty-five million, about eighteen million of that is the new senior development, and then the remaining seven, eight million is between Eddy and Gearing.
Okay. And this is to reimburse them three hundred thousand dollars at the tax break?
This is to reimburse three hundred thousand dollars to developer. The brownfield authority received a federal grant back in 2017, and early on with this project, we contributed some funds to do environmental site assessments, where we looked at the site to make sure there was no underground storage tanks that weren't yet identified. We were the ones that identified asbestos that needs to be remediated, et cetera. So the brownfield redevelopment authority is, whenever they invest in a project like this, it's with the agreement that they would be able to recoup those dollars through a brownfield plan if, if and when one is realized on the project.
Do you think this would be, and just for discussion, if this didn't, does not get approved tonight, would it be a deal breaker?
For, for this project? That's something I can't speak on.
Not that you can answer?
I can't speak on behalf of the, of the developer. I do know that, you know, and this doesn't answer your question, but it, I will reiterate, there's a couple of things to keep in mind when you're talking about the dollars and cents. So you have the liability of old, large school buildings in the middle of the community as well, and all you have to do is drive around this community, many communities in St. Clair County, and see old, large school buildings falling apart, withering away, collecting dust, because they're a liability. They're very hard to repurpose. They're very hard to repurpose. So when you have an opportunity to redevelop one, redevelop one in a fashion that is considered to be at a community asset, it's many, you know, it was felt by many of the people involved in this, because I heard that spoken, that that's, they want to remain, be in the driver's seat with regards to that, because there's, I can think of a handful of schools in some of the communities in St. Clair County that have been closed, and have been closed for a long time, and they're sitting in downtowns, and they're not, they're generating very little tax base, they're attracting vandalism, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, Commissioner Vandemar.
Because we did, I believe Washington Life went for, and I want to say less than $1,000 to the Council on Aging, might even been a dollar at the time, just to get it off of their rolls. Because the liability on that school district to take care of that, maintain that building, and keep it safe, it was, and they repurposed it for a good use, but it's cost the Council on Aging quite a bit of money to keep it going.
Yeah, I would agree. I think you stated that well, and that, I think when we focus on the purchase price, what you have to realize is they're also purchasing liability. And how do you put a cost on that liability? Well, I know raising and demolishing buildings like that is very expensive for local governments, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars.
Anyone else have any questions for Jeff? No? Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Do we have a motion? We have support. So roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemar?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
I'm going to go no.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item L, Commissioner Beeden, District 3, American Rescue Plan Project Building Renovations.
Ma'am Chair, can I make a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan Project for District 3 for building renovations to BW Rock in the amount of $38,269?
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemar?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item M, Commissioner McConnell, District 1, ARPA Broadband Study.
At this time, I make a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan Project for District 1 to conduct a broadband study for Grant Township in the amount of $47,900.
Support.
Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Vandemar?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item N, the Library Director Employment Agreement.
This time, I move to approve the employment agreement for the Library Director, Allison Arnold, for a term of 6/27/21 through 6/27/24.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any questions, comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Vandemar?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item O, Manning Table Addition Request for the Day Treatment Night Watch.
I would make a motion to approve the Day Treatment Night Watch Manning Table Addition of a Full-Time Mental Health Therapist.
Support. I have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemar?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item P, Manning Table Change Request Maintenance Department.
I'd make, I'd move to make the motion to approve the reclassification of a Part-Time Custodian 1 position to a Part-Time Custodian 2 in the Maintenance Manning Table.
Support.
I have a motion and support. This is just, yeah. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Q, Public Health Officer Employment Agreement.
At this time, I make a motion to approve the Public Health Officer Employment Agreement for Elizabeth King as presented for a term of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have some more questions. Because what wasn't part of the interview process and how we got to where we're at, I did have a concern with the $91,000 starting, when, of course, you weren't here last meeting, and Dave wouldn't be able to answer the questions, so. Starting at $91,000 for the position up to $120,000, the proposal for the contract is $107,000, which is approximately a 60% above the starting pay for that position. For somebody that's never been a health director, I think it's kind of, it's tough for me to consider 60% above and beyond.
So internal promotions, employees are placed on the wage scale based on the Board of Commissioners' policy for wage placement. So we look at that employee's existing wage range, because certainly you don't want to promote them into a new position that does not result into a pay increase or potentially a pay decrease if there's an overlap. Then we also consider employees that are supervised by that position and where they're at in the board's encroachment policy. So the placement is based on two board policies with her existing wage range and taking into account encroachment of employees she supervises.
That's about what I figured. Could I ask, is it public knowledge to know what she's currently getting paid?
Yep. Her existing wage, it's, actually, that information is all available on the county's website. It's all public information, but her existing wage is the, top of her existing wage is the bottom step of the current wage scale. But there is also an employee at the health department that has a wage that is in the middle of the wage scale that this position supervises, which is why the higher placement is recommended for encroachment.
Okay. My other one was the hours on the past, and we do have the addendum on to this contract where we didn't have with the previous health officer. We're reducing the hours required for this position from 40 to 37 and a half. That's in the contract. Why are we doing that?
The county's standard hours for all of our departments are seven and a half hour days and 37 and a half hours a week. This employee is required to be on call 24/7 and work any hours required, but that is, the standard work week for all departments is 37 and a half hours. Any additional hours over and above that that are required to be worked to get the job done, this employee is required to do, and there is no overtime or compensatory time. It's a straight salary employee.
Well, past practice for St. Clair County, has there ever been a health officer that wasn't required to work 40 hours?
Well, actually, the current hours of the health department are 8:00 to 4:30, so their current hours for that whole operation are 37 and a half hours per week. I know there's frequently meetings in the evenings that they attend, but I guess I would have to go back to Mr. Parsons when he was in that position, but he also worked 37 and a half hours a week. So that is past practice. I don't know why the 40 hours is in the contract. You know, it was a dual role. I can tell you that individuals in all department HUD positions work well over 37 and a half hours a week.
Because the past health officer's contract specifically called for 40 hours.
Well, the department operations are 37 and a half hours a week. It's, and those hours are set by the Board of Commissioners for all county departments.
Okay, because that works out to another 7% increase, and if you want, past practice, 40 hours. So that's why I'm asking the question.
No, it's consistent with what we have done for the 23 years I've been here.
Contract said it otherwise. Dr. Merkantant-
I can't speak to that, but I can tell you that that office is open 37 and a half hours a week. And that's what all county employees work, except unless you're in a 24/7 operation.
Claudia?
Any other questions about?
Oh, I can, in regards, I did talk extensively with Matt King because of potential, I was asked from a resident that a conflict of interest, or whatever word you want to use it, but she's married to the sheriff's brother, and with that conflict, and I'm very confident with Matt King, he told me that he's going to run his department, just like when Merkantant was there, and he's going to make his own decisions regardless of the health department. The short version, and he said it was okay if I say that.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? We have a motion and support? We have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Vandemar?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
No.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item R, Drain Projects. This, are you?
Ma'am Chair, my-
Sure. Absolutely. These are for us to keep or hand out.
Those are for you to keep, but I do have pictures, and I'll pass them over.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much for your time. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Liz Masters. I represent Wales Township, supervisor out there. We are currently involved in a petition drain project of the Holland Drain through the county drain office. The Holland Drain is $1.77 million, and I've got concerns right now. If anyone's not familiar, it's a petition drain, which is a substantial project versus a maintenance project. Under a petition, there's a day of hearing for the public, and then you have 10 days to appeal if you've not been satisfied. I attended that last year, and I informed the Drain Commissioner, Mr. Wiley, who's here tonight, that there is a road crossing where culvert has collapsed. It has been collapsed, the drain is not draining, and that day of review, he and his project manager, Tony Yutzov, had promised that that crossing would be replaced. Now, just to be clear, I do have a full understanding. I work with the Road Commission on a regular basis, we work with the Drain Commission on a regular basis. There's two things. There's the drain code, as you're all familiar. The drain code dictates exactly how these things are to happen. And just to be clear, I do have a full understanding that Road Commission does not improve drains, and drain commissions do not improve roads. So just for the public, I do have a full understanding. Now, you're going to hear that argument, but in the final end, a project like this at $1.77 million, we've been down this road before, you have to have a drain that actually operates. It's not operating. It's not operating, and it's not being cleared. I've included pictures. In fact, this drain is adjacent to one of our roads in our township, and it's so bad right now that it's washing over and it's collapsing one of our road ditches that we just dug three years ago. The Drain Commission's not touching it. They've said they're not touching. This area of concern is approximately, I would guesstimate around half a mile that I'm talking. So what we're going to be left with, with Wales Township in the future, if this gets passed up and this project gets forgotten, this crossing and this drainage, we're going to be left with a hefty bill to turn around and maintain it ourselves. If we work with the Road Commission, they will have to apply, and Road Commission representatives are here tonight as well, they will have to apply for a permit through Eagle, crossing a drain. Those crossings typically run us $60,000, $70,000 right now. Why am I speaking to you? I understand, and just to be clear to the public, that this commission is elected, a separate commission, Drain Commission Commissioner is elected, separate office, and Road Commission actually works under the county commissioner's command. I'm coming to you for the financial. We have to wake up here. We have to start paying attention. Mr. McMertry approached earlier that there's certain concerns financially, and I want to address the public on this, that if we move forward, Wales Township, within the last five years, also experienced a $2.3 million project on the Green Drain, and I've been informed this spring by Road Commission that we also have a culvert that's failing along that line after paying $205,000 at large. The county on this particular is, I believe, $421,000 at large. The area that I'm talking about, there's particularly four, basically four large landowners there. All of those landowners combined will have been assessed $66,315. And they absolutely will not see any results from this $1.77 million project. So I come to you tonight, like I say, it's time to open our eyes, and I'm not looking for a fight. I'm looking for some kind of resolve, some kind of, if we turn around and we have to pay that money again, the township and the county will be paying on this drain and on this crossing. The county itself will be paying 50%, whereas if it was in a drain project, that could be 33%, split three ways between the district, the township, and the county. So it comes down to the brass taxes that I'm talking about. And I've taken four, almost five minutes of your time. Thank you so much.
You too.
Thanks, Liz. Does anyone have any?
Bill, we're going to get up and finish.
Bill, would you like to complete?
Okay. As I would like to repeat, in case some forgot, on the Supervisor Brockway, in drain issues, I would like to thank the board of commissioners for the opportunity to speak to this forum, but cooperation, I need the cooperation part, request an invitation, excuse me, investigation on the part of the St. Clair County Drain Commission for other things improper and what would seem unlawful practice related to drain issues. Now, this pre-qualified contractor law that went into place in March of 2021, Mr. McConnell's got copies of the, some of them, some of them are good, no problem. But those, and the ones that messed up our Middleton Drain, they don't even own a shovel. Now, that's not a pre-qualified contractor. Now, back after we found the problems on the Middleton Drain, I got in contact with Eagle, and here's a whole bunch of emails going back and forth between Eagle and the Drain Commission for erosion violations that they never paid any attention to. They had to adhere to that. The ditch itself, the owner, one of the property owners is here as well, are just, it's atrocious, the job that was done. And I was speaking earlier to the Senate bill, now by Kevin Daly, wants to increase from $5,000 to $10,000 a mile. But how it works, I'm using the Middleton for an example, and I'm sure it's the same in others. The Middleton is four miles long. In 2020, they went out there and they'd done less than a half a mile, and then they stopped. And then they charged $17,000, a little bit short of the entire length of the drain. That is the stupidest thing I've ever heard of, but that is the drain code, and that needs to be changed. You can't, you can't, a mile of excavation on two drains, one five miles long and one 20 miles long, given the same kind of characteristics of debris and whatever, the first thing a contractor can ask is, well, before I put a bid, which they don't even bid on these maintenance jobs, how long is your drain? There's the figure right there. And the law says $5,000 a mile or part of a mile. That, and then times it by the length of the drain. Well, they done that, and they come up to $17,000 on the first half a mile in 2020 on the Middleton. Then they came back in 2021, and they went the other half of the mile, give or take a little bit, and then they went over. Now, you can't go over $5,000 a mile on a drain code without coming to your township and asking for a resolution. They didn't do it. So they're over. That's another violation. That's a violation of the drain law. That was never, that was never addressed. Now, in January of last year, I came to your meeting, and I asked, I read to you guys, and I asked you if you could withhold $1,750 of a repair that was done on the Middleton Drain by the inept contractor. And you said it had already been paid. Okay, now, I got one more question. Greg, you made the motion to see if you could hold it up so that $1,750 could be talked about. Did you not know that all the county bills were paid ahead of time? Or did you think I didn't know? And did you, tonight, when you approved them, have they already, have they already been paid before tonight? You just approved them or give them your blessing? Is that how it works? Because if you've got $100,000 mistake somewhere, how the hell are you going to pull it back?
Carrie, do you want to address?
Sure. So the accounts payable that are listed on the board agenda are, have in fact already been paid, and they are approved by the board after the fact. The expenditures are all included in the department's budget, so it's nothing that does require prior approval of the board prior to payment.
All right. Here's another, here's one other thing. Now, in 2018, the excavator that the county rents to put this contractor that's not qualified in, according to MDOT rates, and that's what you have to go by, or you're supposed to go by, the Road Commission has to use them per se, or they can't get grants. The Drain Commission, no, there's no oversight. But anyway, for 2021, the rate for that excavator was around $67.76 an hour, is what they should be charged. It started out in 18, he was charging $51 an hour, 44, depending on the size of the bucket. And then in 18, it went to $52 an hour, 45, for the other bucket. And then in 2019, he jumped it all the way up to $105.99 an hour. And that's what the Middleton was dug on. And in 2021, MDOT rates that I have right here should be around $67 an hour. So now, this puts extra burden on the drainage district, the county, because you have to pay county at large on these drains, as well as we have to pay township at large. So he has no damned accountability. And this is just plain wrong. Something has got to change. But I need your cooperation to look into this, because there's other things as well that just isn't adding up. Now, I would very much like to see an- Now, I would very much like to see an investigation prompted on your part. And as the supervisor, I'd like to have something sent to the township to let us know your intentions of whether you're going to investigate this or just bat it to the wind. I don't know. But I'm really pissed at the way things are going because this unaccountability and doing whatever the hell you want to do just don't work in my world, but that's what we've got with the drain commission. I know several other incidences as well, so I'm sure there's more out there also. No accountability, just do whatever the hell you want to do. Is that how we run a government? I'm sorry folks, but I just don't, I can't go along with that, but I would really appreciate for the good of the county, townships, taxpayers, and for the right of decency, would you please put this to an investigation? Because when you see what I give to Mr. McConnell, there's no explanation for how it's being done. I really don't understand how it's got this far, but thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
We got, I gave the packet to Carrie and she'll get copies to everybody.
So, on the drain project, is that, are you finished with the presentation and, or?
I don't know anything about the money process. Bill has been handling that. Of the four miles of the drain, I own three quarters of it, three quarters of a mile. And in 1961, when I was 16 years old, Joe Makis did the whole thing, four miles. He didn't remove the trees or the stumps that I have erosion now where they had to bring in stone to dump it to stop the erosion out of my 80 acre field on one side. They didn't touch the south side and I'm hoping they don't. I've talked to everybody that's on the drain, McCormick's, the Browns, the Krosnickes, they don't have any water problem whatsoever, the same with me. Ferguson comes in, he does the planning, he's already done it, no problem. I don't know why the drain was even touched myself, but that's the way it is now. I can't do anything about it. It's already been done. But anybody else, the guys that did the proper, the work, did not know what they were doing. They took out the stumps, the trees. I got a 20-foot-high pile of stumps that shouldn't have never been removed. And along my fence line in the woods, I got about a quarter of a mile where they just left them in the edge of the field. They're out of the field, but they're in the woods, my 10-acre woods there. But inappropriate, they were incompetent. So, people do what you have to do. That's all I need. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Greg, you've been involved in this a little bit, so do you feel like, I mean, certain parts of this, the county board of commissioners just simply isn't involved in. It's the drain office, it's the drain code that's a state law, right? It's the municipalities, but we could facilitate maybe a meeting to try and figure out what's happening, what we can do on this level, what the drain office can or can't do, what the municipalities can do.
Well, we need everybody to sit down, right? We got to get road commission, we got to get drain commission, we got to, we have to just sit and have a meeting.
We need to investigate the fact that those qualified contractors, is it violation of the law?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think probably to bring all the parties to a table and discuss because these-
There was also a goal with the drain, there's next one wasn't answered. The drain, if it's words work, you just have to deal with it. And that's a fact, because I got my tape right here in my, in case you want to hear its words.
So, right, so I really think that probably the best thing is to sit at a table and discuss what resolutions are even possible. It's just, you know, the county board of commissioners doesn't oversee the drain office. It's a separate elected office, so what can we do? And I don't, I can't answer that tonight. I don't know if anybody on this board can, but I think if we've got some-
Would you help?
Would I help?
Would you sit in on a meeting?
Oh, definitely.
So, if Dave and I did and we can get together with Liz and-
You budget yourself, the drain office, don't you? Don't you have a budget that you-
Yeah.
He, and correct me if, we don't have legal counsel here. We do have Jay who has a lot of experience if he wants to speak up, but the drain commissioner, he's got a lot of power, probably more than the sheriff. Well, let me talk here. That's his job. He's the elected official to do his job, just like we are. We are not his boss. We never will be his boss. Potentially, we can look into the financing with the county does for the at-large projects, but as a whole, and this is the first, you know, you talked to me on one other issue, I believe in the past, Liz, on the drain with the Peters Brothers. But other than that, these drains have not been dug. Many of them haven't been touched since the 1930s when Roosevelt was president. And in my opinion, and there may be some errors that Bob Wiley's made, but he's done a lot of good work too, because we got drains that are actually working now and like you said, some are working perfect. Maybe this particular issue needs to be addressed.
I'm worried about the ones that aren't working right.
Well, he can't do them all. They've been neglected, I know. And I don't want to get in a conversation, I just want to make a statement here of what we can, there's very little county commissioners can do other than looking at the specific expenses that we do, the county at large. He can put those on us and he can make it much larger. That's the authority of every drain commissioner. He can make our expenses much larger than it is. I believe it's over 600,000 right now, isn't it?
At-large, yes, that's correct. And you are correct that the drain commissioner can assess those costs without board of commissioner approval.
Could there be nice things you wouldn't have to charge?
Well, please, you had a chance, Doc. We're going to give you some attention, we're going to have a committee, we're going to address some issues here that we've been given, specific issues. We'll get Bob Wiley involved and maybe he can give us a reasonable response that maybe he'll say he did everything correct. Maybe he'll say there's more he can do. It's not funny, you're not here to make a joke.
I'm not, well, I'm smiling.
Well, don't smile, okay? We're trying to address this for you.
Good, I appreciate that.
All right? Well, let us do it. Yeah, Liz. And I'm sorry, you're the chair. I apologize.
Let's just get it handled and get it done.
I certainly appreciate bringing this out in the open. Two things, performance standards, you can check into that with, especially in the engineering department, when there's items that they do not replace that they know are a total blockage. And as Bill was saying, there is the county at-large portion, so.
Well, and right now for what we've given, and I really, we don't usually get in conversations, but you're both elected officials and we're going to give you the best we can, at least I will. We can have a committee together, we can address the specific issues you gave us tonight first and foremost, and then we can get some kind of response to you. You might not like it, you might like it. Maybe Bob Wiley will come up with something and say this is what he's done and why he did it, and I'm sure he would. Bob Wiley and I have always talked very well and I think he talks very well with many townships and he worked with the finances too. If you've got a financial issue, I'm sure he would have addressed that to you, other than, okay?
They'll save the issue on that page too.
But, and we don't need to keep on talking.
Right, no, I think probably at this point, the best thing to do is to set up a round table and hammer through these things with the information. You gave us a packet that none of us have even seen, so I think probably moving forward, everyone needs a copy of that.
Well, we-
The two of you can-
Carrie, we can get the committee together, whoever wants to, Greg and I to start, and then we can include Bob Wiley, because we need his expertise. We can look at it all we want.
We can set up a table because that part has to be investigated, both the violation of the contractor law.
Right, well, and we'll-
That's beyond you guys and me.
Correct, correct. So, we'll move on from that and handle that at a separate committee meeting or run that up, whatever drain it needs to go, but it's not here.
Do you inform him of our comment?
Yes, yes.
Can I ask a question?
We can talk after the meeting.
This is a quick question about this right here.
Right, but it's not a public comment part, so we'll need to, we'll handle it after the meeting. Item S, the Resolution 22-19 Employment Services Resolution, Michigan Works.
Madam Chair, can I make a motion to adopt 22-19, Resolution 22-19, opposing the Wagner-Pelzer Act rule, change for Michigan Works?
Support.
Thank you. I have a motion in support. Any questions or comments? May have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item T, Parks and Recreation mower purchase.
I would make a motion to approve the purchase of an X-Mark mower from Zimmer Sales and Service in the amount of 10,559.
Support. Thank you. I have a motion in support. Any questions, comments? May have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item U, Parks and Recreation Bell River Acquisition.
Madam Chair, can I make a motion to approve the allocation of 45,000 to Marine City to assist with the local match for Michigan National Natural Resources Trust Fund grant for the acquisition of property for the future development of a public marina?
Support.
Any questions or comments?
This took us roughly 40 years to get a public marina in the city and I think Jeff pushed it extremely hard for us and I can't believe we got it done in six months. I just, I just didn't think it was going to fall together. It usually falls apart and we're going to have something really nice for the local community to use and it goes along with our brand-new kayak launch that just went in in the last couple of weeks. So, I mean, it's coming together very nicely for the boating community and even our, the area for the marina, it's got a huge green, green space area, it's going to be a beautiful park area and camp, not camping, but recreational site.
Wonderful. Hats off to all of you. 40 years and done in six months is pretty good.
40 years and six months. I mean-
All right.
So, I have a motion in support. Any, oh, yes, sir.
Just at our MTA meeting today, we did have a guest speaker. It's the Assistant Director of the Park and Rec and he went through just about every single park of what we're doing, included this and there, and just gave a very good presentation. If you guys would have made it, you would have heard it. But the Park and Rec has done amazing things in the last 20 years. Columbus Park and the expansion of what we have and what we're able to offer the residents and fortunate our residents continue to approve the millage countywide.
I wanted to make it, but I was at a retirement, a retiree healthcare meeting. Okay, I have a motion in support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item V, the interim medical director agreement.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the interim medical director employment agreement with Dr. Reiman, maybe, I don't know, as presented for a term of six, 21 of 22 through 9, 1 of 22.
Support. I have a motion in support. Carrie, do you want to address this, please?
So, the committee did go through the interview process for the medical director and Dr. Reiman was selected as the top candidate. Within that time period, unfortunately, she did receive a different job offer and chose to accept the other position. She does not start that other position until September, so she has agreed to serve as our interim director while we repost and re-recruit an interview for that position. As the board knows, this position by statute, by the state, is not allowed to be vacant for even an hour, so a vacancy in this position would result in a complete shutdown of the Health Department Services or the State of Michigan coming in and taking over. So, we are very fortunate that Dr. Reiman did agree to serve on an interim basis so we can re-recruit for the position. The terms of the agreement and the hourly rate are the hourly rate that was discussed previously in the binder based on our comparables. It's a pretty stripped-down version of an employment agreement with the knowledge that she is only here for several months, so it doesn't include some of the other benefits or items it would normally. Is there any questions on the agreement, the appointment?
I have specific questions. I think this is a very important position and I, well, I'm probably going to vote for it, but on the second page on number three, compensation expenses, I don't see where it's stated in there. The previous contract called for 16 hours weekly, this is calling 123 hours per hour payable. Is that going to be 16 hours? Because potentially, without it being in there, there could be 30 hours in there.
It will be 16 hours as required by statute is the minimum if there is a specific incident that may potentially require more, but the intent is 16 dollars an hour. There is language that said hours is required by law.
So, 16 hours is what's going to be paid even if 30 hours are worked?
No, she will be paid for every hour worked.
Okay. Item E, county shall reimburse costs for the following work-related expenses at 50% as it relates to carry out the duties of this agreement, medical and drug licensing and it goes on. Has this been done in the past practice?
Yes, that is in our current medical health officer's agreement. However, in that agreement, we did pay for 100%, but since this position is only part-time or 50% time, then the county would only pay for 50% of those costs. And in this case, it would be a prorated amount for the period that she's serving as our interim director only.
Under four, right at the bottom, the county shall reimburse for 50% of the cost of medical malpractice liability insurance policy premiums specific to the role as medical director for the county health department. Is this past practice and what is the approximate cost?
This is in our existing agreement with our medical health officer. However, same as prior, it was reimbursed at 100%. I do not know the cost of that policy offhand because it will depend on what additional insurance she has and then go forward, but we will reimburse 50% of the costs relative to the months she's serving as our medical director.
And I know it's interim, but this is not a part-time position, correct?
It will be considered a part-time position. This employee will be paid through payroll, however, there is a definitive start and end date, so.
Because there's specifics with me owning my own company, it says county shall procure and maintain during the life of the contract, which is only about two months, which is going to be here anyways, workman's compensation insurance on employee, including employees' liability coverage. How do you figure that out for a part-time employee?
All of our part-time employees, if they're injured on the job, are covered under our workers' comp. We are self-insured for that.
Okay. That's the only questions I have.
Any other questions for Carrie? Okay, we have a motion and we have a support. Have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Item 12, the administrator's report.
A couple of things to share with you this evening. The county did receive our second tranche of the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, so we have received the full 30.9 million dollars. Tina Bricker, our dispatch director, had reported recently that they worked with the Public Safety Officer for East China Schools and all East China Schools have now been set up on the Smart 911 system and they have actually been testing that with the dispatchers and with the schools. And what the Smart 911 system does, just to remind commissioners and the audience, is it allows individuals or businesses to put their information into a system. So, if a teacher calls 911 from a specific classroom and that number is linked in our Smart 911 system, first responders will know exactly where they're at, where they're located in the building and it will help those police officers fire whatever the incident may be, get to that building and get those children help faster.
It cuts the time down immensely when we go into a building.
And they have been testing the system with dispatchers, so it's been very good practice for them as well.
Do you have any paperwork specific of this?
Of the Smart 911 system?
Yes.
Yeah, I can get you some.
If you would.
Yeah, previously, the board, the state, it was a state program initially that the state funded for three years and then I know dispatch did come forward to this board and the county has continued to fund it, so I think it's a very valuable service, so.
It's not priority whenever you-
Nope, I will send that out for sure.
Smart 911 is also available to residents, correct?
Yes, it's available to residents. You are able to register your cell phone numbers, you know, previously, if you had a landline and you called 911, it was very easy for dispatchers to locate you. Now, with most homes not having a landline, if your child were to pick up a cell phone potentially and call 911, you know, they may know to call 911, but they might not know address, they may not know how to help those first responders locate you. So, setting up those profiles in the system is very beneficial. You can put medical conditions, you know, if you have, you know, potentially someone that may be- that maybe have hearing impaired or different things, that they might not be able to hear, all those different things can be put in, anything that could potentially help a first responder locate you and help you.
Thank you.
Sure. Reminder that the county offices will be closed on June 20th for the Juneteenth holiday. The Michigan Supreme Court officially added that to the state's holiday schedule. All of our county union contracts have specific language that says we will follow the state Supreme Court's holiday schedule, so that holiday has been added this year. And last, a quick update on the 26-mile road corridor study. There has been significant input from the online survey, so there have been concerns that the initial location for the public input session on June 29th, that location was not going to be large enough. So the location change has been changed to the Harvest Event Center on King Road in Marine City, and that's still at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, June 29th. We will make sure that we have information posted on the website, letting people know, so we can get that information out on the location change. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Carrie? Item 13, or any, Ms. Laney's business? No. Item 14, receive and file?
I make a motion to receive and file packets that were sent to commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information presented.
Support.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Item 15, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carried, meeting adjourned. 57.